Okay, all right. We're going to call the Wednesday, November 13th, 2024 Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting to order at this time. And our first order of business is to go into closed meeting. And we're going to have a motion that reads, be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, number one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And under that, we have number one, Economic Development Authority, and number two, Montgomery-Floyd Regional Library Board. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Ms. DeMoss.
Aye.
Mr. Graffsky.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And roll call, please. Thank you Supervisor Demontz for always helping me with that because I forget to turn it on.
Mr. Kits. Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Demontz.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Spohn.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and next we're going to have a resolution to certify our closed meeting. It will read where our Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where a section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Demontz.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Spohn. Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now we're to the invocation, moment of silence and pledge led by Ms. Hill.
Please rise for a moment of silence and then join me as I lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. We're going to start off tonight with our presentations and awards and recognitions and we have David Clark from VDOT with us tonight, so come on up David. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Some of our maintenance plans for the month were a little bit changed due to some storm stuff, so we did spend a lot of time on hurricane repairs, debris removal, it's not as bad as it was in Giles County, but we still did, have to do a lot of work on Flatwoods, Allegheny Springs, Bradshaw Road, mostly debris kind of removal and some permanent repairs were needed on Bradshaw Road and on Cove Hollow Road. Able to do some patching, also along with that debris removal, did brush cutting. Just a couple places, Willis Hollow, Woodrow and Pollard, which are near Christiansburg. Our big accomplishment was getting Taylor Hollow completed, that was done with State Force hired equipment, plant mixed in the curve, service treated the first part, I think it looked, I think it looks really, really good and it's done except for probably some signs. By law rural rustic roads are posted 35, but obviously the curve can't be 35, so we're going to do a study to see what the speed ought to be. Even if you post it for 25, the curves are going to have to be posted, obviously, so. And then we'll work on this year with the six-year plan on where to have the rest of it done. I think it's second, but I'm not, I'm not positive if it's the next one, I thought it should have been since we just split it in two, but we'll see with the six-year plan this spring. And then we just did a lot of machining in Hollingstone, it has been very dry, so we were getting dust complaints, we were able to hit a few routes with dust control. And that's it, that's all I have. Take any questions.
Okey dokey, we'll go around and see if we have any. Supervisor Grafsky, anything tonight you'd like to ask?
Sure, I just wanted to follow up on the question about if Norris Run or Big Falls were going to be on some sort of schedule, not necessarily this year, but where those would land in terms of resurfacing or repaving.
Well, anything that was, that was damaged will be repaired.
Right.
With asphalt.
Actually, these requests came to me prior to.
Oh, I see, okay. Let me, I'll check and see if anything's on the, the, the schedule for next year, we already made up next year's schedule, but we'll review it for addition to the schedule. Big Falls and.
Uh, Norris Run.
Nor, Norris Run, most Norris Run is unpaved, is it not? There might be a little bit at the beginning that's, that's paved.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, and Supervisor Demontz.
I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Supervisor King.
I have a few. On Drive Alley, I got some information from some citizens out there. I think that road's supposed to be 45, but there is no speed limit signs on that road whatsoever.
Okay, I'll check the history of it.
Some of the bus drivers has said something about it too. And then on Childress Road, I know we've been talking about this for a while, have you heard anything about us moving this 45 past the residence?
They have looked at that, I don't know if I've gotten their report back yet, but I know we had talked about moving some of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you could, I appreciate it if you could check into it and get back with me.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Once I find out, I'll send an email.
Aye.
Instead of waiting to, yeah.
Aye, because lady contacted me the other day, as a matter of fact, election day, she said somebody about got run over backing out of their driveway. And the Piney Woods stop sign right there at the crossways, I appreciate you putting that up there, the 25.
Yeah.
That was nice, thank you.
Yeah, that helps.
And then on Piney Woods, I think last month they put double yellow lines in, and then today they come out there and put tar and gravel over top of it. What was the purpose of that?
I don't know, some of them, that might be where they, they're going to have to re-put those down because they were in the, they, they didn't put them in the center. It was, I mean, it wasn't even close.
Oh, it was off.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you had, you had a lane, one lane was eight feet, the other lane was 10 feet wide or something like that.
Are you going to come back and?
Yeah, they'll, they'll put them down in the right place.
Aye.
I never looked at it, but that's the reports I got, that they, they didn't even get close to put them in the right, in the center of the road.
Aye, and one more thing.
Mm-hmm.
Stanley Road, a big pothole.
Oh, pothole in Stanley, okay. All right. That's it, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Kits.
That wouldn't be the same line striping company that did Pepper's Ferry, is it?
I don't know.
Just wondering, because that, that seems a little haphazard, just, just saying. If we could look at that again, these are my, these are my hills I'm going to, I'm going to die on these, this flashing light on, coming up the mountain, up at the hill towards the arsenal.
That's planned.
That's a big one, because I almost clipped somebody the other day. And the Pepper's Ferry Prices Fork intersection, I'm going to stay on you till you, you're going to see my face.
Yeah, they're studying, I mean, sometimes there's so much traffic, there's nothing you can do.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's at least, it's 40 cars either direction at any given time with nothing on Prices Fork coming in. It's just becoming, it's getting trickier and trickier now that it's getting dark, it's getting really tricky, because people come flying over the hill 45 miles an hour and everybody's at a dead stop. So, those are my, those are my three, I'm hanging on those, so.
Sure.
Just consistency, it's all about consistency. But thank you for being here today, greatly appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
You can't put a flashing light or anything to help with that? Like what he's saying when they're flying over the hill, like to warn them to slow down?
It's a light timing thing.
Yeah, it's more of a timing thing.
The lights stay, because you've got Pepper's, Prices Fork coming in.
Yeah.
And there'll be no traffic there, and then Pepper's Ferry on both sides will be 40 cars deep.
Right, right.
But it's only that I've seen in the afternoons and between like four and six, like when I was on my way.
Yeah, it must be a specific, I was, I was always hitting this, I was through there at four, four, 4:30, and I didn't see a problem, but that doesn't mean there wasn't a problem 15 minutes later.
Yeah.
You know?
Oh, yeah.
Everything lets out and, and, and it can overwhelm the signal timing, you know?
Oh, yeah, and that's, that's the thing I'm just trying to get to, because it is, now that it's gotten dark, it's really getting a little, makes things a little more sporty, so.
Yeah.
So, but thank you, again.
Sure.
Okay, Supervisor Ben.
Thanks for Taylor Hollow Road, I'll make sure I check it out the next couple of days. Bishop Road, we had talked about putting up one of those speed limit signs and it sounded like it would be possible, and we sort of talked about the South Main Blacksburg speed limit sign. If we could get something like that on Bishop Road, that would be really helpful. How do, how do we go forward?
It says what your speed is, kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Next to the speed limit sign, right?
Right.
Yeah. How do we get that to happen?
A lot of times the sheriff's office will put those up, but we've been looking at one in Floyd and we can, I'll see if we can use either some of our safety money or the, the counties, we get an extra allocation to do a lot of what we want, actually, we're going to use a lot of the safety money to do the flashing signal at the arsenal, but these, these aren't that expensive.
Yeah, so it's kind of a permanent fixture though.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the ones the sheriffs have are portable ones, they move them around, this would, yeah, they do make permanent ones that you can just mount right there.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for, if there's anything that we can do to make that happen sooner than later, that would be great. That's it, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Vice Chair Fidzikowski.
Could turn my mic on. Thank you. Talk about line painting, I always got a kick out of the ones where the dead possum's laying there and they put a stripe over it. And that's always stuck in my mind, but when they striped Allegheny Springs, there had been a dead possum there and they skipped it. I thought, wow.
Then the possum leaves and you don't know why.
Yeah.
There's a blank spot there, yeah.
Yeah, was he just sleeping? I just got a couple of, first, thanks for putting down some dust control. Hope some of it made it over to Fisher's View, but irregardless, after tomorrow, maybe this will all settle down for a while.
Yeah.
But I did get two requests. One is a complaint about a sign got hit, obviously in a car accident, right there at the intersection of Allegheny Springs and 460. It was in the median and it was still laying there last time I saw it, and I can't tell you what kind of sign it was, it was face down, so I'm not really sure what it was, but I assured the citizen that it would, that you, you guys would get to it, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Because you don't leave signs down for very long.
No, not long, it'll be gone tomorrow, if it's, if it's not already.
And it could be done already.
Yeah.
And the other one was a, a sight distance complaint out of Slusher Lane, which is off of Allegheny Springs. Slusher Lane is a private road, but the complaint was, as you look up Allegheny, in order to come out of there to make a left turn to go into Shawsville, there's a lot of trees, they sit straight below that little pond that's next to the Sneed Farm. And I'm not sure of what the right-of-way distance is, because the trees, of course, right now, when I went out to look at them, all the leaves are gone, so it's, it's not bad sight distance, but I'm sure when it fills out, it's probably a challenge, but it may be outside of your right-of-way, so if somebody could check that.
Yeah, sure, we'll check that.
Yeah, I think they're just some, what do I call those trees, sumac trees, or I don't know, something like that, but those two issues were the only, only things I have.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and then I was supposed to remember, hopefully, to ask you about what's happening in Brush Mountain West with the roads up there that, you know, folks were having.
Yeah, we're doing a review, I think next week, we're setting up a time for our maintenance people to go out and look and see if there's anything else needed to be added to the punch list to get those in.
Okay, good, thank you.
I got emails on that today, so it's, it's moving.
Oh, yay, okay.
I'll let you know when, when we get real close.
Yeah, that would be great. Does anyone else have any further questions for David? Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, now we're going to move to our portion of the meeting for public address, and maybe first I should ask, is there anyone that wants to address us tonight? Okay, seeing no one then, I'm just going to go ahead and close public address and I won't read our guideline since we don't have anyone tonight. And that will lead us to our, I guess, asking if we have any addendums, do we, Ms. Hill?
No, we do not.
Okay, how about items of consent, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Demontz.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Spohn.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, all right, that will take us then, let me turn the page here. Okay, let's go to our new business, and we have one item to start with, and that is our appointment to the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library Board for Ms. Linda Capone-Clausen. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay, second, all right, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Demontz.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Spohn.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. I think everyone's a little bit, I think, anyone watching this is probably thinking, what's wrong with these people? We just got back from a conference yesterday and we put a lot of energy into that, so we're going to put a lot of energy into this meeting too, but we've got it, we've got it. Okay, let's go to the option agreement to purchase real property, and I'm going to call on Ms. Hill to, if she has comments about that, before we put it on the floor.
I don't have any comments to make unless you have any questions, I shared with you the information about the option agreement to purchase real property.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Hill? All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any further comments? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Spohn.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
No, for the reason that I stated earlier.
Mr. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Demontz.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one no.
All right, okay, so that.
I'm sorry, six ayes, one no.
Wow, one of those days.
It is.
Okay, all right, that brings us to reports, and I guess we'll start off with the county attorney, do you have anything you'd like to report? Yeah, a presentation?
I think, I think due to the late hour, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and not get a report tonight, but thanks.
Okay, all right, let's go then to the county administrator report, and Ms. Hill, I want you to talk about this because.
Oh, okay.
This is our really exciting thing here, and I want Ms. Hill to address it because staff earned it.
The staff did earn this, as Chair Biggs mentioned, we attended, several of us attended the VACO Annual Conference this past weekend, started on Sunday and went through yesterday. It was a great opportunity to get some valuable information about upcoming items that are at the state level that will have an impact to the localities and also network with our colleagues and determine the best ways to approach some of those items, I'm sure that some of the other board members might speak about that a little bit more, but the county library system earned the best large county achievement award from VACO for their sensory museum, and that's a really big deal because it's the large county award, which Montgomery County is classified as a large county, but we're one of the smallest, so that was an exciting achievement that our staff accomplished.
And it's going to be displayed here, right?
Yes, it will be.
Yeah, and then.
I saw them setting up the display case, they, they put it right there in the upper foyer area.
Right, yes, that's right. Also, I attended the open house for the Lewis Gill ER in Christiansburg recently, that was a great opportunity to see that facility, it's a good addition for our community that brings another option and it has some state-of-the-art things that some of the other ERs don't have right now. and it, um, has some state-of-the-art things that some of the other ERs don't have right now. Also, I got some information, I spoke with, um, Sheriff Parton and Jason Cochran, with the, who's the captain of the, our jail this evening, and I had mentioned that they might have a staffing need based on their population at the jail. I'm gonna be bringing more information to you about that at a future meeting. And Chris has a report he met, related to some transportation items.
Great, thanks. We had the opportunity to meet with our Commonwealth Transportation Board member, Dr. Smoot, earlier this week, Bree Hopkins, our planning and GIS director, and myself. We basically are able to share large, uh, transportation projects with him to help orient him to what's coming, and then he advocates and, you know, can also answer questions. Our big projects are Route Eight, safety improvements from Reiner to Floyd, Route one-fourteen, safety improvements, uh, starting at Priests Fork through Bellevue Elementary School, all the way to Vickers, um, Vickers Switch, uh, and then Priests Fork Road and Merrimack Road intersection improvements. Uh, and those are very competitive, you know, we get, we compete across the state, but those are our big projects, and then we expressed appreciation, because we've been very successful recently on projects, and then also highlighted Amtrak service, uh, coming to Cambria, and, uh, he was excited about that as well, so, thanks.
That's all we have.
Um, don't you want to talk about your presentation? It was an excellent presentation at the conference.
Well, I'll be glad to. I made a, a presentation at a luncheon for the, it was a VACO conference, and then one of the luncheons was for the Virginia Local Government Managers Association. They asked me to present about the water, uh, Water Authority boil water notice and how that impacted our county as a result of Hurricane Helene, and Jen helped me put together some information for that, so I think it was a good opportunity to share, as I mentioned earlier, a way for us to share information and experiences that we've had with our colleagues, so that that can help them when similar things arise. And one of the things that I spoke about was how it was important that we already had trust in our community collaboration, and that we were able to get things done to get that, uh, system back online for the entire county as quickly as we could.
Okay.
And I appreciate the board's support.
Okay, and it was a good presentation, um, a lot of us were able to, to go and see that. All right, so let's go to board member reports, and we'll start down here. Supervisor Bone, do you have a report?
No report.
Okay, and Supervisor Kits?
It was the first time that I had a chance to go to the VACO conference. It was, uh, it was a good way to learn on different subjects. We had breakout rooms, and I appreciated the variety of subjects that we had. So, uh, I look forward to be able to actually exchange ideas with other supervisors, and I thought it was a really good chance, not just to network, but to learn, because there's a lot of experience in that room, so I'm appreciative of that, so I just wanted to throw that out there, but that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor King?
Don't have no report, but I was gonna ask, are we, we do that, uh, Small Business Saturday, are we gonna move it up a week? I know, uh, shop small business?
Yes, that, we did mention that before, we need to look into that some more.
Okay, 'cause I know several others are doing that, that would be good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Demots?
Not, I just want to add a little bit about the VACO, um, conference. Just some of the topics that we learned on, and please excuse me. We, um, we each had the opportunity to attend our own individual sessions. I, um, attended sessions on land use, workforce development, energy policy, sports, tourism, and conservation in rural Virginia, and it's always interesting to hear, um, like in the, um, energy conversation, um, a lot of talk about pulling water from the Rappahannock River and prioritizing citizens or economic development, and how do you, um, how do you prioritize those when people are all taking water from the same source? And while, uh, the Rappahannock doesn't necessarily affect the New River Valley, we do have a river that runs through the New River Valley, so it was interesting to hear how other localities are handling those types of issues in their region. A couple of items personally to note, um, I was re-appointed to serve on the VACO Board of Directors as one of our Region eleven representatives at the VACO Conference, so that's another two-year term to represent our region on a statewide, um, level, which is, uh, a huge honor that I'm very happy to, um, continue to fulfill. And, um, my colleague, Phil North, who's the, um, who's a supervisor from Roanoke County, was also reappointed to serve on the VACO Board. However, immediately after that, he was elected to serve as VACO's second vice president. So, that, I mention that because it's, um, he's been on the Executive Board of VACO, which is a really great way to get, um, some of our regional needs amplified at a statewide level. So if anybody runs into Supervisor North from Roanoke County, please do congratulate him, because that's a huge honor. And I guess that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. All right, Supervisor Grafski?
I will just piggyback on what Supervisor Demots and what Supervisor Kits said there, and appreciated the opportunity to go there. It was encouraging to meet both other members who had been newly elected to the Board of Supervisors, and, you know, were as, I don't wanna say underwater, but were, you know, as, as overwhelmed maybe, uh, as, as I was, but then also how encouraging it was to hear from more tenured supervisors, and, uh, you know, just hearing words of encouragement, hearing their stories, things like that. But the thing that blew me most away is how well-respected members of this board are across the state with, uh, other boards, and so, uh, I just feel really fortunate to be up here. Thanks.
Okay, and Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
Yeah, the, I thought the conference went very well. I attended the state budget, which, um, after coming away from being in the meeting, I can't tell if we're, I think everybody said we're, the state's in good shape, but how good was, uh, what couldn't be nailed down? So, we're either very good or just good, so I'm not really sure about that. But the other two that I attended were very, um, had very lively discussions. Uh, one was the energy, um, uh, talk, and it sounded like, even though i- i- it was kind of a sugar-coated meeting, it sounded to me like the General Assembly will, again, this year, try to mandate or try to give authority, I should say, to the State Corporation Commission to, uh, make a decision, um, on whether large-scale solar would be placed in any county in Virginia. That's kind of bothersome, because it takes authority away from locals. This local body wouldn't have any, uh, way to, uh, stop it, and it seems like having a department that is in Richmond make that decision for us out here in Montgomery County just doesn't seem fair. Now, as far as I know, we don't have any large-scale solar, uh, projects on the horizon, but if one comes up, I, I would hate to have to lose the ability to, um, deal with it. And the energy, uh, that was also very interesting, or I should say, the public safety, uh, session that I attended was very interesting, and very similar to what, um, Anthony mentioned. A lot of the supervisors across the state have the same issues that we have, and the biggest topic in that, in that discussion was the drug boxes that the rescue squad, uh, carries, and how that is being handled by the state. And again, everybody looked at it as a, uh, a mandate that goes unfunded, and so all the counties are scrambling to figure out ways to, uh, deal with it. So, um, it was a lot of information given, and, um, we shared a lot with, um, counties that are on the other side of the state, so it, I thought it was great, a great way to, uh, um, end it, that's for sure. That was my last one, so, that's all I got.
Okay, um, I wanted to go back to what Supervisor Demots was talking about earlier, about her, um, uh, really, it's a reelection to Region eleven as a rep, and it's a very important one, so congratulations. And also, I wanted to mention that, um, the new, uh, leaders of VACO, we have a president-elect, William Cardy, from Isle of Wight, and a president, Ruth Larson, from James City, and our first vice president is Victor Angry from Prince William. So, with Phil North being the second, um, vice president, that really does help our region. I want to talk a little bit about, I went to the Steering Committee on Education, and it sort of interplays with what, um, Steve and Angie and I attended the state budget meeting. I don't know if anyone else was in there or not, but, uh, one of the big things that, you know, I guess, you know, we've kept saying over and over and over again is the J-Lark study, and that study concerns the state's lack of funding, um, to public education, and it's something that we've pushed with our, uh, General Assembly members, uh, at our legislative dinner, and it's something that VACO has as their top priority, along with the land use issues, but this is top priority in the budget this year. And so, we'll probably get an informational piece that can be given out, uh, to citizens, so they can have a better understanding of what we're talking about. But, uh, that, that came up in the budget, uh, work session, and as well as the Steering Committee. Another thing I wanted to tell you guys, that's sort of, sort of fun, actually, with the airport authority, we had a meeting the other day, and we're doing really well with those Virginia Tech football games, bringing the airplanes in and selling the jet fuel. We want to sell as much fuel as we can, because that helps with the airport. So, for the Boston game, we had fifty-nine aircraft at the airport, and we sold, um, seven thousand seven hundred gallons of jet fuel. At the Georgia Tech game, we had thirty-six aircraft, and we sold forty, four thousand one hundred and thirty gallons of jet fuel. And at the Clemson game, we had forty-two aircraft, and we sold seven thousand nine hundred and fourteen gallons of our jet fuel. So, I don't know what will happen with the UVA game, but, uh, that's really good for the airport. So, that was exciting, and they're working on their, their ramp, and there's a lot of construction going on over there. If you drive by, there's hangar construction going on, lots of good things, so, um, I thought you might like to know that. Now, is there anything else for the cause? Yes, Supervisor Demots?
I want to just add one thing, um, you reminded me, um, VACO is preparing a one-pager that, about the J-Lark study and the impact locally, um, and they also, um, I spoke with Gage, their public information person, and, um, he did say that they can translate it into other languages. So, if we had a population that maybe would find ease of access in a different language, I asked actually for Mandarin, um, if, if that was an available language to translate it into, because I know some of the population in my district would appreciate that. So, that will be available, and I think we could disseminate it to PTAs and the school board.
Yeah, they're gonna have, they're gonna send it so that we can actually print it out at the local level. And the idea was, as Supervisor Demots said, to give it out to the public, have it available, because the public, I think, really needs to understand what the localities have been faced with over and over and over again for decades. And finally, a nonpartisan group, the J-Lark Committee, proved to everyone what we have been saying every year. So, um, we gotta keep on it. You know, there's money in the state budget, it's just a question of how that money is going to be allocated. Is it gonna be allocated to needs? Is it gonna be allocated to tax cuts, or both? So, we gotta keep a really, keep our eyes open for all of that. Anything else? All right, with that being, I can't believe this, but we're adjourned.